We have a meeting to order for January 22nd, 2018, for the regular meeting of the Johnson County Board of Education. And just before we go into business, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Powell.
Before we begin with the pledge, I would like to take a minute to thank the staff of Central Elementary for hosting our first board meeting at one of the elementary schools. It looked wonderful, so thank you all for all of your hard work. And also I'd like to give a special thanks to Levi Blair, Abby Stambo, Haley Butcher, and Chloe Hannah for leading us in the tour of the building. I don't want to interrupt, you all did a wonderful job. Now, lead us to listen to the pledge. We have Ms. Carolyn Craig, fourth grader. Ms. Cameron Dunbar, fourth grade, Central Elementary. So please come on up and let me stand for the pledge.
For allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every gene of justice for all.
Wonderful job. At this time, as we've always been done this year, we want to read a mission, vision, and core values, and I want to ask Ms. Chloe Hannah, Central Elementary sixth grader, to come up and read that forth.
The mission of Central Elementary School is to encourage all students to develop and display a reference for learning, achievement, and success that enables each to become a productive member of society. By providing our students challenging curriculum in a safe and inviting environment conducive to learning, we will empower them to be successful both in and out of the classroom. To address the needs of the whole child, we will make a sincere effort to improve the physical and social well-being of each child, reduce barriers to learning, and increase parent involvement through curricular offerings, family resource center programs, and extracurricular activities.
And now, we'll move on to student recognitions. This month, it being Central Elementary, we want to honor the girls' basketball team of Central Elementary, who were the county champions in JCKAA. I want to say, before they're introduced and Coach Hall speaks, I'm very proud of you. I started with you last year over here, and I'm very proud of you last year, and even more this year, if you continue to come together. So, Ms. Hall, you want to go ahead and speak? And Ms. Hall is in the corner, she has an injury with her thigh or something over there.
Good afternoon. We would like to recognize our team from Central Elementary for their Johnson County Championship win. Avery Butcher. Mark Castle. Addison Graham. Chloe Verdi. Amy Lee. Chelsea Phillips. Abby Lee. Abby Swirbo. Lea Rahn. Chloe Hearn. Cynthia Jackson. Taylor Shering. Alexis Williams. Holly Williams. Courtney Lynn. Shay Muse. Emily Reed. Sydney Maddox. Brooke McInnes. Carolyn Grace. Kylie Hall. Roland Terms. Taylor Grier. Taylor Cross. And Martina Holland. We are coached by Robyn Hall and Ray Rahn. We would like to thank our principal, Ms. Halsey, each parent, staff, and faculty who have been on the mission today. We couldn't have done it without you. We love and thank you for another great season.
Well, if you'll get in behind and get a picture, please. Carol, thank you. I want to say, the future is bright.
Thank you, ladies. I also wanted to mention, we have a special guest with us tonight, Dr. Fletcher, Superintendent Lawrence County Schools, to the north of us. He's done an excellent job up there. Welcome and come back any time. Appreciate it.
The next award we're going to give out tonight, as we have done over the last few months, is to give out the Golden Eagle Awards. And as you know, this award is given to a certified member each month, and a classified member of Johnson County Schools who has gone above and beyond. And I do want to say, each month, we have to tell some white lies in order to make sure people get here without them knowing, so hopefully we have done that again. First, our certified member has been employee of Johnson County School District for almost 25 years. The last 15 years, she's been a self-contained unit at the high school with some of her most modern and severely disabled students. She proves her commitment to her students and her job by going above and beyond her expected duties. She volunteers at ballgames, after-school events, and any other extracurricular where help is needed. Sharon Stamper is an inspiration to our students and those around her by her hard work and dedication. Some examples of her dedication include her involvement in JCHS Perks, Spirit Club, and Student Council. She attends prom every year with her students to ensure they have a memorable experience. Sharon does bus duty both morning and afternoon daily. She also attends every graduation to support her students as they walk across the stage. She also rarely ever misses a day at school. Her tireless devotion to her job, students, and fellow employees have got unnoticed. So, Ms. Stamper, congratulations, come on in. She thought she was here tonight to change her ways, but I'm telling them.
She'd be relieved.
Our classified member for the month, came to work at Johnson County Schools in 2003. He started his career at Highland Elementary and has worked for a few years for Camden Central Elementary when Mr. Ben Hamer was president. David McKenzie was a former student of Flag App, and then Johnson Central High School, so he spent most of his life in this system. This Camden Central Elementary has worked for several presidents, including Steve Young, myself, and now Ms. Halsey, in a variety of roles, which included chief grass cutter, fire stove, bathroom patrol, and counselor. He has worked both day and night shifts, been a beck and call for his kids all these years. He's currently the head custodian, loved dearly by his school family. At home, David's husband to Teresa, father to Brooklyn Rock, but his most proud two grandbabies, Elizabeth and Aiden. Central Elementary is proud that such a wonderful person has been honored with the Johnson County Golden Eagle Award tonight. Come on, go ahead. It's like Christmas time, it's all right. I'd like to also make everyone remember that these Strut Bees Golden Eagle Awards actually come from Johnson Central High Schools. Our STEM class, engineering class, makes these using a 3D printer, and our program doesn't paint on these ones, so hopefully those make them look a little special. And the Bible base is sponsored by Castle Jewelry and gift, so. All right, and the last round of recognition we have tonight, it being Board Member Appreciation Month all of January, we have Central Elementary student, Ms. Abby Stambo, who's a sixth grader, to read a proclamation for recognition.
Proclamation to all whom these present shall come. Whereas our community values of quality education as a vital stamp along the pathway to success for our children, and Bob Hutchson, Milton Vanus, Bruce Davis, Willie Frilly, and Brad Crisby contribute greatly to this community. Through their service on the Johnson County Board of Education, and these decision-makers are responsible for maintaining strong, effective, budgetary oversight, high standards for employment, and a safe, well-managed set of school practices. And these board members are serving our community with integrity, honor, and commitment to our children's futures. And January 2018 marks the tenth observation of the contribution in our tribute town through school or recognition. Therefore, the students and staff of the Johnson County School system do hereby recognize the month of January 2018 throughout this community as a school-wide recognition month, and urge all citizens to honor Bob Hutchson. Milton Vanus. Bruce Davis. Willie Frilly. And Brad Crisby.
Now, I'd like to say, we want to move on, that we are very blessed to have all five of you coming here. The things that you do, and your hearts, being with the children, don't ever go unnoticed, we surely do thank you and appreciate you from myself and all of Johnson County staff. Thank you so much. Now, girls, basketball, you're welcome to stay if you want to pay for more meetings, or you're welcome to leave if your parents want. They'll say I won't leave without you.
Next on the agenda, we're going to approve the minutes from December 18th, 2017, regular meeting, the bills and payroll from January 18th, 2018. Motion's been made, is our second. Motion's been made, is second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is the renovation report. Mr. Adams.
On 5A, from the direction of the board to go back and look at our district facilities plan, we're asking that we go ahead and make the payment to Sherman Carter Warren Hart, $1,234.51, for the work they've done to help us get back to get ready to look at our district facility plan, so that we can go back and rent it through our DTLGC for the grant money that was awarded to us from the state, so that's what that payment's for. We ask, I ask for you to approve that.
Thank you. Our motion to approve. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
On B, this is already part of the contract with CMTA. We do direct purchasing, and we just ask, we're asking you not to approve the BOs for the direct purchase, the rest of some of the other parts that come in, to be paid for our project, for our energy savings project.
Thank you. Is our motion to approve? Is our second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
On C, we've got all of our lights in. We are moving right along with our lighting project for our energy savings contract. We, I know Trevor will speak some, about some of this on the next item, but we have our LEDs in Central Elementary, Johnson Central High School, Johnson County Middle School, Porter, and half, Highland's is almost finished, so we're moving right along, but we do ask that you go ahead and pay that as we went ahead and got the rest of the lights on, in, and we should be moving to WR Castle and Flag App between the next week.
And I guess just to elaborate on that, those last two items are the same thing, the direct purchase order summary and that invoice, all it is, is just a way for the district to save money on taxes by having the district purchase our equipment for the project directly. So that's all that that item is, is since you all approved invoices every month, I've just gone ahead and included it here as well, to make it easy. Just to prove that, it's just equipment for the project.
We don't have to approve. You've already approved C and B and C's together is what he's saying. So we're good on that. So we'll go on to D, and of course, I'm going to let Trevor talk a little bit about D before, but I do ask that you approve this when Trevor gets finished, but this will be payment number five for our energy savings. I'm going to let Trevor, I'll turn it over to Trevor this time.
So hopefully you all have a chance to walk around the school. Pod number three here, Central Elementary is completed now, minus a couple of small items, we're still trying to get into the vegetable doors. The phase two of the bathroom is ongoing, we're about to put epoxy flooring down, so we're moving on much faster than phase one did, so we expect to see results on that within the coming weeks. As I mentioned, lighting is going well. We've made substantial progress in the LED tube install, we're lacking part of Highland, WR Castle, part of the high school as well, along with most of the gyms now, how the high base is installed, as you can see here at Central. The controls is ongoing as well. The hardware install is big to lead in here at Central, with everything onto the high school, so now they're following behind in doing the program side of things, along with in parallel doing controlled box creation for the schools that are already Johnson Controls, so they can interface with that. So I expect that Central Elementary completed when we have our first integration school completed in the coming weeks as well. So that's where we're at.
Again, we do ask for payment number five out of a bargain.
Thank you. Our motion's approved. Second? Motion's made, is second. Any discussion? If there'll be none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six, Ms. Halsey.
I'm Mr. Edward Wood, so I'm going to state my thing to Ms. Halsey, because she's out for leave right now. I still have a little bit of our investment assessment action plan for Central Elementary. Well, we've done our needs assessments, we looked at several documents in order to find out where our weaknesses are, but that gives account the 2017 spring tape prep test, our new exact path diagnostic test, the accelerated readers, SARS, and GANs, the reports that have to process, and all those are tests and assessments that we give throughout the year to see where our kids stand. And what we're looking for in each of those, the tape rep, of course, we're looking at the numbers of novice, proficient, distinguished scores that we have for our school, and also the growth from one diagnostic test to the next. We also evaluate reading skills and performances of each student, and those levels are measured across all areas, not just reading alone. Here's what we found, as far as for last year's tape rep results, it indicated that we still had a, what, 14.7% novice scores in reading, 10% in math, 21 novice in writing, and 20.3% score in the English arts in the camps. However, overall, we had 63.1% of the students scored a professional or distinguished in reading. However, one of the things that once we started looking and digging deeper into it, we had probably more than 10 to 15 more kids that was one, two points away, or less than five points away from being distinguished in reading. So we're making a test, trying to get those on. Things we've done here that we'd like to celebrate, our CNPS, of course, they were international championships last year in human services, and they were also state runners-up in the same category in state, when it went on to be internationally, they've won that. Our FPS scenario writing team, they placed second, third, and fifth out of the top five in state juniors camp, so we're real proud of those kids and with their accomplishments. Again, there's 63% of official distinction scores in the tape rep. And here's a little link into the next three slides, is that even though we had those type of scores, is that we're showing a huge improvement based on looking at our exact test that we just started this year. One of the next one. Here's one example in math. At the beginning of the year, of course, we were about 20, 25 days into the school year before this program got up and running, but at the beginning of the year, we was averaging about 57% of our kids were below average in math. At midpoint right now, we're going to cut that down to 44%, and that's last, somewhere probably around 12 weeks, we've made that kind of gain. We started out at above average at 4%, and we've already increased to 9%. These next two slides shows huge gains for us, especially again, the language arts, we started out 65% below average, and we've already cut that to 49. And also, above grade percentages were, we started out with 10% above grade, and we've already reached up to 70. So we're fluctuating, we're at point 10, 15, 18% gain in a four-week period with this exact path program that we're doing. Again, reading was one of our main areas that we wanted to look at, and with the exact path, we started out 64% below, we've already improved that 18%. We've got 46 kids right now just barely below average, and we've gained up to 22 to 13%. Some of the things that we've noticed are our strengths and our weaknesses. One of the strengths we have is, of course, the one-to-one technology initiative, and also our renovated primary classrooms now, which I think will make huge gains for those kids in there. And also, we take a lot of thought and a strategic placement of teacher's assistance to where the student needs, or most need. The weaknesses, of course, we've got too many students still remaining in the novice and apprentice levels, but with the exact path that we're using right now, and getting those teacher assistants where they need to be, then our kids are gaining ground very quickly. Opportunities and tendencies, we know there's a need for every student from the new school every day. You know, every day they turn the classroom, the more they gain. And then again, the one-to-one technology, and we're looking to strengthen our writing programs all the way across the board, all the way to kindergarten, up in sixth grade. And of course, we always have the threats, and then you know, it's kind of things that we don't really want to look at that much, but we have to, and they're common regardless of where you're at, you know, poverty levels, drugs, the lack of jobs, and that. But even though we look at these things, and they are threats, we don't want to use those as excuses for where we're spoiled. We want to continue to work hard and get our kids where they need to be. Thirty-six to ninety-day plan, again, we always use our PLC teamwork. We do that right off the bat, so every time our test was in the previous year, we start breaking down those tape reps and doing the analysis on them, for GANs, exact path, baseline test, all those tests we take into consideration when we're trying to figure out where kids are and what we need to get them to be. Again, the implementation of the exact class, we were about 20, 25 days into the school year before that actually up and running, but again, in about 12 weeks here, our kids have been committed to it. Sixty-day plan, we're going to continue to work with our PLC teams and analyze our students' work, and in our PLCs, we meet at least once a week, PLCs lie horizontally with all grade levels, and then also vertically, where we're just looking at a specific subject area. Those teachers will meet once a week, or once a month vertically, once a week horizontally. And we constantly analyze multiple sources of student work. Ninety-day plan, the biggest thing is, we're looking at flexibility instead of moving based on how those kids are doing. If those kids are struggling a little bit more, we want to keep those down there where we can get them the most attention we can get. And also, even those kids that are doing better, we don't want to sit them up there and let them get bored or lax and not gain, okay? We want to make sure that we're doing RTI, not just as an intervention, but also for enrichment for those kids that are above average. Some of the things that we do here to try to improve performances, again, our tendency centers is dancing, we have bookouts, classroom attendance calendars that the students will actually keep, so they can track their own attendance. Student performances, we do a lot of those with fine arts, of course, the fourth grade, they do the wax museum that we put on every year in the gym, they do an extra job with that, sixth grade, their math performance that everybody will wear up to and supports us. Third grade, they do the Christmas drama, and then the primary grades is the musical classics. Special activities, we do a lot of the grandparents' days, first grade's Dr. Seuss birthday, which is coming up very soon. Second grade does the birthday day, and the fifth grade, that's their Constitution Day. So we make sure that we include all kids, all grade levels, into our committees in our school, and also, we have a school-wide culture adjustment that all students will participate in. Students leave conferences with their parents, so when we come in, we sit down with our parents on the parent-teacher conference at night, we ask the students to be there with us, so they know what we're hitting across to the parents, and the student knows what's expected from both parents and from the school itself. And we use those to help parent communication system. Only other thing is, we have one young man that's with our fourth grade class, Brian Woods. Brian, if you want to stand up real quick. Brian is a, he's a fourth grader here, and with the fourth grade class, he's collecting money for the children, for shriners, and he's doing this in memory of his papaw. I don't want to steal too much of Brian's thunder here. Go ahead, Brian, if you want to say if you would about that.
And that's what we wanted to take, to turn it toward as a community project. But he came up with the idea completely on his own. In fourth grade, we just jumped on the bandwagon with him, and we let him do it. So we're very proud of it. So if you have any loose change when you leave, and you want to go into the shrine, we've got our bucket up front, we'd love for you to do that.
I didn't catch his papaw's name.
Gary Woods.
Gary Woods.
He always gave to children's charities, several. And his papaw died. He took it hard. He said, "I want to do something in honor of my papaw." And all of that I do. I said, "Well, what do you want to do?" He said, "Well," he said, "you think papaw would be proud of me if I helped children?" I said, "Absolutely, he'd be proud of you for anything." That's when he told me about the person, he said, "He said, 'The mommies can't take their babies home.'" He said, "I want to help them, we have to take their babies home." I said, "Well, the best way we can do that is maybe start a fundraiser and see if the school would graciously open arms to everything." I mean, they've helped so much with Grace, and Scology, and Central. I, we couldn't have asked. We couldn't have asked. That's just in pledges since November. This is going on till May. So he's, he'll, he'll go above and beyond what he's, his goal is.
Only that check back.
Right now, we are taking money and we're depositing it into our PTO. So if you might get after the Central, only through PTO, and then they have a column for us to go home and write us the check back to type to the Shriners Hospital.
Good job. Good job.
Next on the agenda, item 6B, Ms. Colvin.
State law requires that I present a draft budget by January 31st and be chaired the board. I would like to take this time to remind the board that the draft is the first of three budgets, the budgets that are required annually. The second being the ten that we just presented tonight, and the final is the working presented in September. The draft is considered an early planning tool, and it's on set this time. We have, we have a lot of work today before we finalize, but this will be a 19 budget. Basically, the only thing that we know for certain is that our county retirement rate is going to jump up from 19, well, 18 percent to 28.05 percent. And that's an 8.87 percent increase. And that's going to be almost $100,000, just to not count our state increases that we give each year to our boys. So we know that we're looking at $100,000 cost in addition to all the pets that the governor pets. But some other things that we don't know that is essential to finalizing the budget, we certainly don't know our carry forward amount that will end this school year 18, but possible state federal funds, our tax rates that we need to adopt, and our motor vehicle assessments, our total property assessments, and what kind of expenses we have on our seat company, our safety allocations, and our student ADA. Guys, have the draft left in your files, and it's just for your review only, there's no action needed, but certainly open any questions that y'all might have.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, we have 6C, Ms. Colvin.
Annually, we have to assess the wellness environment of the district, and it includes anything from health education, PE, and nutrition services. This year, it's a little different than it had been in the past, and we're required to use the Alliance for Healthier Schools Assessment Tool. And this assessment tool is, there's six modules to it. They are completed on a school level, per school, whether it be by the principal or PE teachers, also through the district, myself and Ms. Music included. And of the six modules, most of our schools fall in the bronze or silver category, so it means that we are in progress. And, and then we also have action plans created for any of those modules that are considered under development.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, we got 6D, Mr. Yance.
Yes, each year, the state requires us to maintain on file reciprocal agreements with neighboring school districts or districts which we receive students from or we give students to. This year, you have in your packet the report of number of suits we receive from each district and number of suits we give to each district, also some historical data considered concerning those. We're asking tonight for approval of reciprocal agreements, a one-to-one agreement with Lawrence County, any and all agreements with Ashley Independent, Martin County, Borgan County, Lawrence County, Pike County, Pikeville Independent, Floyd County, and McGoffin County contingent on, contingent on receiving agreements from those districts, and also with Paintsville Independent contingent on receiving their agreement as well as the Floyd County agreement.
Their board meeting's tonight, correct?
Floyd County Board Meeting is tonight.
Did they tell Simon what they're going to do?
No indication. I know it's on the agenda, but I don't have, I don't have any inside information.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the reciprocal agreement as presented? Is there a second? Due to lack of a second? Can we get a motion to table?
Motion to table, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Sir, second?
Sir.
Motion's made, second. Any discussion? There'll be none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item 6E, Mr. Cochran.
We've been involved with Quebec for the last several years with Russian pop grant that has enabled to provide salaries for coordinator and some other things, and also one-to-one computers and some of those grants. There had, this was the year the school ran out, there has been an extension that will continue our AR coordinator for additional years, and ask the board to approve that.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. 6F, Mr. Crum.
Yeah, the JAG program, we talked about this a few months ago, when you all gave approval to, for us to apply, give them intent of interest. That funding did come to fruition, and they have sent us a MOA, and it's a really nice setup for us because they're, they're handling and paying for it. We don't, actually, you know, you don't even, they're paying directly, even the salary. So it's, it's a win-win for us as a district, and they feel like, even though the funding right now is just for this semester, that they feel pretty good that this is going to run into a long-term agreement again, that we may be able to get this program up and going on into the future, which is a great program for kids.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made, second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. 6G, Mr. Jeff Cochran.
Asking you all to approve the KETS offer, offer of assistance of $49,974. We have to match that exact amount of funds, and then they will put that down in from the, take department of education, and we will use that money in one technology, and we'll use that money to go to continue to the implementation of our one-to-one program for our students.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So may.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Item 6H, Ms. Butcher.
Hi, on behalf of Porter Elementary, I would ask the board to approve our spring fundraiser for our school life, grade recorder. It's too hard to remember, and we should have our funding back around market rates if we do it starting now.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So may.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item 6I, Mr. Crum.
Yeah, there's a, a RISE grant that was one at the high school. It's an arts grant that's through NBC Universal that she's wanted to fly for to get that would help our theater and arts program there at the high school. We're also asking district-wide for low school block's grant, active learning center grant, which helps put furniture, active learning furniture in classrooms, and the McKinney mental homeless grant pending district qualifications.
Thank you, sir. Is there a motion to approve?
So may.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item 6J.
Asking the board to approve district use facilities for Cal Ripley, Johnson County Bay basketball, and Johnson County youth soccer program. Those may be a variety of things used to be of interest.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So may.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. 6K, Mr. Crum.
Yeah, we've got three trips. Our cheerleaders advanced at their, the NCA competition in Lexington, and are going to the nationals February 8th, leaving for Orlando, and they've done their own fundraising for that. And the FFA Farm Machinery Show that we do each year, and it's February 15th and 16th. And then the senior class is planning right now a trip to Lawrenceburg, just right there outside, it's on 275, right outside of Cincinnati to the perfect north slopes right now, and they're going to do their own fundraising for that as well.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second? Motion's made, second. Any discussion?
How many trips do our seniors make a year?
Well, what we decided to do this year, we met with them at the beginning of the year, and we asked them if, you know, they, the last couple of years, they took a bigger, they had a trip to Gatlinburg, and there was very low participation in going to that. It was, it was a lot more expensive, and it, you know, for some reason or another, and I said I wasn't there, but it wasn't well attended. So in talking to the seniors, suggestions made that they try to do one trip each nine weeks, something, and, but they've all been on Saturdays, they've not even, you know, they haven't impacted school at all, so they wanted to do something different. So they did a UK game there, football game, first nine weeks, which was really cheap for them, like $30. And then we did the, they had that, the thing that we did to Cincinnati there for the second nine weeks, and then this was kind of their big one they really wanted to do was this one that they planned from the beginning of the year to try to go to ski slopes. The fourth nine weeks, they haven't, we haven't come up with anything yet, but I think it's just going to be something in state that they can just go down and do there, that one. But that was what they requested as a class, and I told them if they would work, you know, if we would raise money, that's what they wanted to do as a class, that we would try to provide them opportunities. Especially if a lot of them get a chance to do things like this.
So who picks up the bill for this trio?
Board will not be out any money on it.
Does school system, has the high school? I'm just curious, is the high school?
The, the high school, yeah, through our fundraising and through them, yeah, they're at the high school, yes.
Does all the seniors get to go, or have an opportunity to go?
Every senior, yes. Every senior has the opportunity to go, and we told all of them that if one of, if they're short on money or having any difficulty with that, we will, and that's where the school steps in. I mean, we asked them to pay their ticket price, but if they don't have it, we sit down with them, and we've, we've helped some each, each one of these trips. We've helped a few that were, you know, in a tight spot.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Butcher.
Motion's been made, second. Any further discussion?
Know what kind of participation you got on these last two trips?
Uh, Kings Island was great. I mean, it was probably back to almost what it was back when we used to go every year. There was probably 115 that went to the Kings Island trip. It was a really well-attended one. The football game one, I think there was about 65 maybe or so that went to it, the football game, that first one. And so far on this one, we just had a meeting, we've not gone back to get, you know, but I, I think we could be up close to 100 on this one, maybe, you know, just, just from initial interest on that. So we'll know more here in the next week. We want to go ahead and get everything lined up, and of course, we've been out of school last week, so we've had a chance to meet with them to get finalized that. And we also are looking on this one, there's a good deal where, from where it's located, and also using possibly doing a charter bus to it, maybe more affordable, and maybe able to do it cheaper because they seat more people. So depending on the interest level, we may be able to get that cost down for them even more by doing that, because you can, two charter buses for which you can fit three school buses. So when you figure out costs, just because, this is a really good location where it's at, because it's right off the, just off of I-275, you know, so you're right off of it, down 75. So it's from a logistics standpoint, this one, this one was very convenient and easy to get to.
Any further discussion?
If you want to take a charter bus, we can approve that. Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you can go ahead and approve that. I mean, it's possible that depending on the numbers we want, I'd busy go ahead and approve that, so we want to take the most economical route, wherever we can save the most money for them, is how we're going to try to do it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item 6L, Mr. Cochran.
We were afforded an opportunity for a offer of assistance from SFCC, $160,978. It's similar to the KETS offer Mr. Cochran talked about, so I will ask that we approve that if we match and accept that offer of assistance.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
So may.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. 6M, Mr. Jeff Cochran.
I'm asking through all approval on E-Rate funding, a commitment. It's based on our pre-reduced lunch each year. We've not asked for category two, I think, in four or five years. The quote was for $188,000, but we are, we're, we meet the criteria with 85 percent. So our part would be $28,778.77. So basically, it's a discount of 100, almost $160,000 to redo the wireless in our whole district, and it's not been replaced since 2010, I think, when we originally replaced it. And we really just to try to keep up with our one-to-one on our, for our students.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Item seven, Mr. Cochran.
Each month through this year, I've gone over a different standard for new superintendent's. This month is standard four, which is human resource leadership. You should have a copy of the activities I've completed, and all these practices under that standard, or read them all to you, but a few things that I've done, what went out is the central office leadership calendar that we all do in the central office team, also the new teacher training, onboarding process for all new hires, the leadership practices inventory that I completed and ask each of you to complete on me and several other workers in Johnson County schools, parent staff surveys, and then a near pot of structural resource demo training that I set up for all of our central office leadership team and practices, just for your information. And also, I failed to do this at the first meeting, we've had a lot of continued illness throughout our district and have suffered some loss of our work family. I don't want to leave anyone out, but specifically for Porter Elementary, we still have one of our teachers who's in Zealand getting better, another one of our teachers has a baby, broken leg, and unfortunately, we lost a member of our family, Frank Hampton. Last couple weeks ago, I would like to ask that we all, ourself in the moment, silence. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the superintendent's personnel report, and no action needed there. Item nine, I'd like to get approval at recess into executive session concerning to KRS 61.810B to discuss future acquisition of property. Is there a motion to do so?
So may.
Second?
Second.
Motion made, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We expect no action. Feel free to hang around if you wish, but we will have no action after that executive session. And board members, women, go to another room. I'd like to thank you all for coming out tonight. I'd like to thank the staff and parents here, Central, and the students who participated and made this an exceptionally good evening for the board. Thank you.